Got everybody in that just a full house. Are we, are we live?
We are.
All right, welcome everybody to tonight's planning commission meeting for the city of Tumwater. It's Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three at seven P. M. And the meeting is called to order. And I'll start with roll call. Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Schumacher.
Here.
Vice Chair Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Mr. Verella.
Here.
Mr. Von Holtz.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Roberts. So, welcome everybody. Okay, um, any changes to the agenda that people are noticing?
We have no changes, just a couple of notes. Our next meeting will actually be on, uh, June twenty-seventh and it will just be a meeting with the planning commission. We will have a joint session scheduled for July eleventh.
Very good. Thanks Brad. Are there any commissioners' reports? I'm head shaking, none in the room. Okay, great. Uh, Brad, managers' report.
Um, I'm afraid I don't have a report this week.
Um, any public comment, um, any folks here tonight? Right, we've got Jolt News. Doesn't say who, but, um, would the representative from Jolt News like to, uh, make any comments to the planning commission? Oh, it's Mr. Twainio, would you like to address the planning commission? I guess not. All right, did you receive any other, uh? Oh, did I not wait long enough? Brad, did you receive any other comment by?
No, we haven't received any comments since our last meeting.
Right, let's jump into our, um, tree and vegetation preservation regulation update, discussion on what we discussed last time.
Yeah, uh, so what I wanted to do today is allow the commissioners' time to ask any questions based on all the material we dumped on you two weeks ago. Knowing that there's gonna be a lot of stuff to go through. In fact, on the staff side, as Erica can attest, we are still working through some of the, the finer details. Uh, so we would appreciate, you know, if you have anything, clarifications, anything that you heard at the discussions that you'd like to ask further questions about, this is really a good opportunity for.
I know I brought my notes from last time because I was jotting all over everything. Folks, any further comments?
Looks like Commissioner Tobias is ready to speak.
Oh, thank you, um, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I just had a question about, um, I know that a big part of the, uh, urban forestry and street, tree plans has been, um, both carbon offset and canopy coverage. Um, you know, to, uh, spurs the effect of heat islands in an urban or suburban environment with a lot of asphalt. Um, so while we have three requirements for, um, either preservation or replanting for development, um, can the carbon offsets be done by, uh, like other types of shr- like shrubbery or other ants that necessarily provide, um, canopy coverage? Or is it like strictly like tree for tree in the way the city has it set up?
Yeah, and actually, we don't, um, we, we don't have a measure set up either in the urban forestry management plan or in the regulations for carbon offsets. Uh, we have, uh, obviously things that we've been doing through the climate mitigation plan where, uh, at a broad level, we're looking at overall canopy and how that may contribute to carbon, uh, reduction. Uh, but we don't have anything necessarily set up as goals or so forth, either in the policy document of the urban forestry plan or on the regulatory side. Um, we try to keep it fairly simple on the urban forestry management plan by concentrating on tree canopy as our primary means of measuring success. And using that as sort of a surrogate for dealing with a whole bunch of other things, uh, from habitat to the carbon sequestration and so forth.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? And just, could you remind us, or me, um, kind of rough percentages of, um, of the total, of the total, uh, land area of this city? How much would be kind of wooded or forested versus more prairie versus, you know, developed and, you know, kind of off limits? So that we could gauge, you know, are we, you know, are we really focusing on the big, biggest chunk?
Yeah, so what are, and I apologize, I don't remember exact number offhand, but I believe it's either forty or forty-two percent, uh, was the canopy coverage goal overall for the city. Um, and that was broken down further depending upon the land use and the intensity of the land use. So something like a green belt or an open space, which is primarily intended to be undeveloped, would have a fifty-five percent canopy goal. Single-family, um, lower density, uh, and intensity uses would have about fifty percent. And then commercial, industrial and so forth would be about thirty-five, about twenty-five percent. And what we're exploring right now on the staff level is when we, we discuss the tree credit concept in the plan is to sort of have a similar kind of ranking, uh, for those particular kinds of uses and those particular kinds of areas. So that, you know, you, you would have more value, e- expect more value in those lower intensity areas than in the higher intensity areas.
And of our, of our kind of existing coverage, um, would you say that, um, fifty percent or better of the, um, land area of Tumwater is more wooded coverage now? Um, versus some that's just out in the prairie where we, where we're not gonna see can- tree canopy, we're gonna see, you know, understory or grasses that have to help, um, uh, that we have to figure out our preservation around those. And what's the rough percentage or?
It, it's probably close to fifty percent canopy.
Okay.
You know, um, maybe just a little bit less. The, the other thing to keep in mind is while we have native prairies, uh, they really have to be actively managed as native prairies, otherwise they, it will be colonized by trees and.
Right, yeah.
Um, so, and that doesn't include obviously all those areas that currently are developed with.
Yeah.
Buildings and parking and all that other stuff.
The reason I ask is just to, you know, kind of, you know, this, this kind of, um, regulation is gonna apply in roughly fifty percent of the land.
Well, it, actually, no, this, this will apply throughout, uh, because there's, there's two things going on. There is the preserving the existing trees and canopy, uh, where we have the tree retention, uh, goals and everything else. Uh, we're also with the tree credit system, looking at assigning values for each of the properties within the city, um, to have a certain, a number of tree credits that they should have. So some may be well over, you know, what they're existing, maybe fully forested and, you know, they're above whatever their goals are, but there are also a lot that are under. Um, either they've already been developed or they're, you know, they've been logged and used as for other uses, uh, but they would still, the expectation would be as development occurs, those areas would be required to bring up the canopy in those areas.
Okay, okay, good, good clarification. Commissioner Kirkpatrick and then Commissioner Verella.
As I remember, when we were looking at the plan, uh, Tumwater was in the enviable position of having to primary look at preserving its canopy cover as opposed to Olympia and Lacey, who are going to have to, uh, come up with a plan to improve upon it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. Mr. Verella.
My question's actually similar to that. Are we, are we above that threshold currently, or are we?
Probably below.
So we need to actually move up towards that goal of, say, forty-two percent? Okay.
Yeah, and I think there's a couple of things that play there. Number one, um, you know, we, we set the goal with the understanding that we have a lot of undeveloped land, meaning there's a lot of forested land that would probably be turned into some other, like a commercial land or an industrial or housing. So we would lose that coverage over time. So our, our coverage would probably do this with the expectation by the end of the twenty-year plan that we'll be above what we started, but we, we know we're gonna have a dip because of development.
A little bit of lag time from development to planting to full.
Exactly.
Maturity or whatever. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I forget exactly where it is in here, but in the discussion on forest practices plans, uh, it, uh, lays out the fact that we have, uh, wooded areas in the city right now, which appropriately are going to come down.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're, they're gonna be developed because there's no reason why you would cut those trees and then replant for another forty years in an urban area. So we've gotta come up with something on the lands that are not there to make up for, uh, where we're gonna lose in the future.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how big a problem that is.
Well, and that was really the point of the, of the urban forestry plan was to make sure that, the understanding is as we develop that we try to strive for, you know, what, the ultimate, the, the underlying land use would sort of drive the percentage of coverage. With the understanding that there'd be more space perhaps in the single-family neighborhoods than elsewhere, uh, to put trees and so forth in. So that's where that's coming from.
Commissioner Verella, do you have a minute? All right, anybody online? Don't see hands raised. Nope, okay.
Okay, so on the test next week.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, go ahead.
Well, I, this may be premature, or you can get into it, uh, later when we get, when it, get into the nitty-gritty. But, uh, with a fair portion of the city still not connected to sewer, I'm wondering, you know, I went through this thing and I saw no mention of it. Maybe it's included in the billable area, I'm not sure. But, uh, many properties, uh, when you take away the house and the, uh, drain field, there's not a whole lot of places to plant trees.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think.
That's gonna be more and more as we go to duplexes and triplexes and quads.
I think, uh, on one side, the, the, the tree preservation plan really kicks in when you redevelop from the, the current state, which is probably a lower density, uh, or intensity use. So you may have like a single house on a larger lot acre or so. The expectation is you'll be able to short flat that, connect it to water and sewer, so you'd eliminate the wells and the on, and the onsite septic systems, uh, and be able to potentially use more of that area for planting. Um, you do bring up a good point, however, how we deal with particular situations where we may be too far from sewer right now. Um, I think I need to, we needed to figure that out a little bit more. I don't have a good answer at the moment to try to say that we actually make sure that we don't create a situation with that.
When I look at the duplex, duplexes in our neighborhood, uh, the drain field is basically the backyard.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they have some beautiful trees on them that the developer left, uh, right on the edge, but they're almost like the defining property line. Yes, and they're, they're good trees that are five and six feet in diameter, but, uh, they're, they're right on the property lines because everything else had to come out to put the drain field and house in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brad, do you, do you know how much, um, much land the city owns throughout the, the city?
In terms of acreage or?
Yeah, let's take your honest.
Not as much as you would think is the short answer. Um, uh, you're probably looking at the biggest holding, um, here.
Mm-hmm.
From, well, the, the port actually owns the, the parks department. We have, we own this, we own City Hall, and we also own the library. And this is, I don't know, about, about ten acres, I'm assuming. Uh, we have maybe ten to fifteen acres at Trail's End. Um, the golf course, I don't know the acreage of that, but that's, that's not really developable, it's in the floodplain.
Yeah, right.
Um.
Well, I, my thought was that, you know, one of the, one of the issues is that, um, this is one of those, this is one of those problems where it's, um, it's easy for people to, you know, look at your neighbor who has, you know, much more property or something. Oh, he can put in, you know, trees and so forth. But, you know, maybe it, maybe something to consider would be for the city to, you know, kind of lead by example and say, hey, you know, we've got these parcels and, you know, we were able to, you know, find a place to put, you know, three hundred trees and we ended up planting, you know, three hundred trees and, and, um, just as a, um, just as kind of a kickstart for showing people, you know, what we're trying to achieve and, and, uh, how it's possible.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to necessarily have a, you know, all in one place, you can put a couple here, a couple here, and, you know, overall, if everybody could put one tree somewhere, we'd end up with, you know, twenty-five thousand more trees. Anyway, just to.
Yeah, no, I, I think you raise a good point there. Number one, uh, some groups with the city, like the stream team and so forth, are doing lots of riparian planting along the deschutes where, one, we can do it, uh, because, you know, we, we, it's not gonna redevelop into anything else. Um, but at the same time, every time we, we have a, an issue, uh, that comes up with the city, it's always, what kind of land does the city have to contribute towards it? So that comes up when we're talking about the habitat conservation plan. Do you have any land you can contribute to the gopher? Uh, affordable housing, we've, we've been repeatedly asked how much, can you have any land that you can turn over to, to, you know, developer for that? So, um, where we can, I think we, we try to do that, but we don't have, unlike some cities, like Montesano.
Yeah, right.
Who has their own city forest, um, we're, we don't have that kind of land bank. I think that we could do as much as we'd like to.
Being previously sat on city council in Montesano, I can attest to the fact that that was a goldmine.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
But as a follow-up to that, uh, and back, what I was just talking about, you know, what the city could do is if they built out the, uh, uh, sewer system and took all those properties off a septic.
Mm-hmm.
You would be creating a great deal of open land where trees could be planted.
Mm-hmm.
Those two birds with one stone, because eventually those drain fields are gonna fail anyway.
Right.
And if you can get the sewer system in before that, uh, you'll be saving a lot of people a lot of money and they might be very happy about it.
What, what percentage of the city is, is not on sewer?
I don't have that, but it's a, it's a fairly significant amount in the southeast and in the southwest corners. Um, where, where we can, we've been extending sewer, uh, you know, as part of roadway projects and so forth. But to get to Terry's question is who pays for the sewer extensions now?
Yeah.
Um, in areas where they're failing, it's, we can make a, an argument that the, you know, that the city withheld from the neighborhoods can contribute to extending, but extending by itself is a little more difficult.
City would pay for the sewer system, but the connection fee would reimburse the city for their investment, right?
Yeah, but somebody has to have the cash upfront to pay the contractors.
Would it take to recoup that money if it costs two thousand to do it for a home, let's say, but you get hundreds per month or whatever? There's a time, so I don't see, I don't think we have the numbers on that correctly, that's kind of what we're driving at.
No, it, it, there's a lot of factors. I mean, there are some cases where it makes a lot of sense because we're expecting a lot of development and that, you know, within, say, five or six years, you could recoup the cost because, you know, the extending the sewer itself will be the trigger to cause people to redevelop. But say in an existing neighborhood like Terry's perhaps, it will take a while. Uh, there probably won't be redevelopment to necessarily pay for it, so we have to figure out a way to make sure it's not too burdensome on the homeowners and property owners in the meantime.
Are there grant programs, um, like through Department of Ecology and, and the like, or federal to do that kind of conversion? I don't know, right word, but.
Not really. I mean, I, I think if we're dealing with a situation, um, like a brownfield redevelopment, like the brewery or something, we've been pursuing grant funds to try to kickstart that process. Or the, the old washed-out site, for example.
Yeah.
We're pursuing funding to try to get that going. Uh, but unless it's a health emergency, uh, it's a lot harder to just say, you know. We've also been trying the argument that, you know, disperse limited development for affordable housing, you know, to push it over the edge. If there's areas of the city that, if you just extend it a little bit, you'll get, you know, enough people interested that they can afford to do it, then they'll do something. Um, you know, we're pursuing those in a limited way, but that's, it's not really a, a big thing you can get money for.
It sounds like it might be, you know, I, the, the argument that you could convert it and use it for, um, planting trees that will sequester carbon and cool the city and on and on and on. Um, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, benefits, uh, to that that I would have thought may, perhaps some agency that grants money might be interested in.
Well, Alyssa, uh, Jones Woodard, sustainable coordinator, is having a lot of success with grant funding. And I'm sure once she gets through the most recent cycle of urban forestry grants that she just got awarded, um, she would have to, we go after that. So I will politely mention it to her. So if we get extra funds, you can name it after her because she's been the one doing the work on all this stuff.
Good. Uh, well, do you wanna keep going or?
Yeah, I, what I'd like to sort of talk to you a little bit about, if, if there are no questions immediately, is, uh, the wild, is it wildland urban interface code?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, nickname Louie, which I really don't like the nickname. Um, it is a, uh, it is a requirement now, uh, through the state building code that we adopt what is known as the Washington Wildland Urban Interface Code. What that is, uh, is sort of a cross between our building code and our fire code, dealing with those areas that have high vegetation and, um, high development. So, uh, and it's a statewide requirement, not just in Tumwater. Uh, but Tumwater unfortunately is a really good example of it. And if you look at a aerial photograph or you look at the, the couple things. Number one, uh, this is, uh, Washington State Department of Natural Resources has done a lot of mapping for, uh, wildland fire hazards. And they've assigned values depending upon the level of vegetation, level of development and so forth. Uh, with, all those maps are available online and I could send you the information for you to look further at that. But essentially for the city of Tumwater, with the exception of the area sort of centered around Capitol Boulevard and I five and Henderson, uh, in a north-south band, uh, all of, two-thirds of the city is covered by this. Uh, meaning for, when it comes to the code and the purpose of the code is to minimize, uh, building and development activities that increase, uh, wildland fire. What that means is either, number one, when you're building a new structure, whether it's a house or a shed or a grocery store or whatever, you build to a certain fire resistance level. That's everything from the roof type of, you know, roofing that you do, the windows you do, the doors, the siding, everything. Decks, you know, you don't put certain kinds of wood, you have certain levels of clearance, you have, you know, so anyway, it's very prescriptive. The choices are you do all that and you can have vegetation near your house. If you don't do that, you have to maintain a certain clear zone around buildings and structures. Now, that clear zone could be, and we're still trying to figure it out, typically between thirty and a hundred feet around. And in that zone, you can have trees, but they cannot be the, the canopy can't be closer than ten feet from one tree to the up. And similar things for types of vegetation and other things. What we're trying to figure out is, it's gonna throw havoc into this project, uh, because it's gonna be really expensive to try to build a very fire, fire-resistant structure. I don't have the exact cost yet, I'm gonna have to work with our building official to do that, but my guess is most people won't go to that option. Um, they have multiple ways to meet the code that way. We're currently looking at probable adoption of the code July, August of this year. It's a requirement from the state that we now adopted as part of our building code update package. Um, building code update package includes everything from the plumbing code, the fire code and everything else that involves, uh, changes. Currently, we're thinking of having a one-line exemption in the code dealing with, uh, those requirements. Um, it will understate really kind of the impact of that, I think. Um, and we might, it might be something, we have to see how it plays out and make changes after it gets going, kind of thing. So that's, the more that we've learned about it so far. Erica, does that cover pretty much?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So that's the primary purpose, is this, um, risk reduction of wildfire?
Correct.
Not any other kind of.
Well, it is exclusively, uh, that. And we, we've not adopted, there, there's been previous versions in the past, but we have not been required to adopt it.
Mm-hmm, but now?
But now we're, now we have to.
Verella.
That's supposed to be out in July, August timeframe? And the factor there is prevention of, reduction of wildfire risk.
Mm-hmm.
That's also gonna, um, have an impact on free allocation, because if you have to push that out thirty, fifty, hundred feet.
It could potentially, you know, on the broader urban forestry management level, yes, it may have an impact there, but we, we might have to see how it goes first, measure the impacts that we're seeing on the ground kind of thing and make, readjust.
Which would take precedent.
Fire, fire code has precedent.
Good, then we may have to adjust this planning to meet that.
We need to, we, we need to have it in the back of our minds that there may be things that we deal with. What that may mean is a, a much greater emphasis on, um, say, rather than trying to load up individual lots with trees, you know, like small lots, you know, five thousand, six thousand square foot, uh, single-family lots where, you know, where we might have done in the past, we'd look for other opportunities, uh, that don't create those risks, but we sort of incentivize that. We're still trying to figure out how that could kind of play out, but that's what we're, what we're leaning towards.
I'm curious, oh, go ahead.
Is someone looking at this from a statewide standpoint? I mean, this isn't, this isn't a problem unique to Tumwater, and we shouldn't have a hundred cities individually going off and trying to solve this problem. It would seem, seem to me that there should be some state agency that, uh, would, uh, consider that of importance, whether it be Commerce or somebody else.
Uh, I don't think they've caught up to it yet. Um, this, and the reason I, I say that is, we just found out about, this is a general issue when we were doing the update work on the hazard mitigation plan. Um, one of the big things and one of the big set of things that, uh, we have to look at is of, is minimizing wildfire risk in the community. And in addition to, say, for example, dealing with flooding along the deschutes or earthquakes or other things like that. Um, and that, this has really popped up at our radar, you know, like February, March of this year. Um, I'm concerned that, you know, so on one hand, we've got some state agencies whose goal is one thing, uh, the building code who's, the building code council has other, you know, concerns, they wanna, their, their primary goal is minimize risk and, and harm. And then other state agencies haven't quite figured out what's going on yet to react to it. So I, I think this is just gonna be out there until we have more time just to see how it plays out.
Um, just kind of an interesting question about the state agencies. I'm wondering, not, not knowing kind of what drove the passage of this state law to require this, I'm kind of wondering where the insurance industry is.
They're probably very excited about this.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if they got maps that, you know, kind of like their floodplain ma- maps and, you know, other kinds of things where, if they have fire risk maps.
Yes, yes, yes and yes. And after the meeting, I'll provide you with our information, our links to all this information.
That might be at least a basis for understanding where, you know, the biggest risk is.
Yeah.
Um, and where to, you know, place emphasis if we have to go that route, you know?
It, it's not as neat, uh, as, you know, a, a solid line, everything on that side of the line, you're okay and everything on this side, you're not.
Mm-hmm.
It's more of a, uh, a splotchy map. So, yeah, a, a large chunk of the airport is a fire risk and then surrounding it is not, that kind of thing. So, uh, it's, it's not down to the, you know, we, we can't say everything up south of Trosper, for example, or everything.
Um, so six or seven years ago, I went down to Rochester and on a mutually requested fight a brush fire. And, um, and it was incredible how fast that moved and jumped across that line and kept going. And there were hundreds of us down there and, and like a hundred apparatus and helicopters and it was insane. And it really opened my eyes and, um, to the risk that we, you know, basically that we all have to some, some degree or another. And obviously the wildland urban interface is where it's really. And obviously the wildland urban interface is where it's really at. But, um, one of the things I read back then was, was a report done by insurance companies, um, in Northern California, and they were saying that the average cost, um, during an initial build of a two thousand square foot home was less than twenty-five hundred dollars to bring it up to what they considered a, a fire safe, um, you know, build. And they talked about, um, um, you know, vents, uh, you know, both in the foundation and the eaves that were, you know, ember resistant and, uh, you know, concrete siding and non-combustible resin material and so forth. Um, and I, and I will just preface all this by saying I'm not familiar with the code and what you were talking about earlier. I don't know what specifics Washington State is instituting. But, um, I will just say that last summer, uh, when it was so dry toward the end of summer, it hadn't rained in three months, you know, uh, it made me very nervous. And, you know, we live in the city and, you know, but we are up against the, we are right up against the, um, natural area preserve for, uh, whatever, Percival Creek area. And it made me very, very nervous because once that stuff gets going, if, if you've got a ten mile an hour east wind or something, fifteen mile an hour, you better get in your car and leave because it is going to be a nightmare. Anyway, um, the twenty-five hundred dollar number stuck in my mind. Um, now these days, that's probably a seventy-five hundred dollar number, uh, on a, on a two thousand square foot house and everybody built a three thousand square foot house. But still, it's, it seemed really reasonable compared to, um, you know, the other options, basically. So that's just my input.
First thing I did when I moved into my house was pay to have the cedar shake roof placed and that's more than twenty-five hundred dollars.
Hmm, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Just re-roof, just re-roofing the house. And unfortunately, there's still a lot of cedar shake roofs in Tumwater. And that's probably the biggest, uh, fire hazard in any house.
Some of there by, you know, neighborhood association or homeowners association, um, to, right, yeah, require that look.
Yeah, we, we require it, but only for replacement.
Yeah.
You can't tell the people that already, that already have them.
Yeah.
They've got to replace their roof. So it's a long process to go through.
So, um, I will be asking our building official to give us the general idea of the difference in cost between, let's say, a typical, what we're seeing now come across and, and what a fire resistant build will look like cost-wise. Um, little background on me, I'm from Northern California, so every summer, the hillsides would go up, um, and really bad. Uh, you know, you, it would be typical to lose thirty-five plus housing, uh, houses every year if it was a good year. Um, and our community development director politely brought up the example today of the fire last year in Bunny Lake.
Mm-hmm.
That went up on the hillside. And that's the classic California fire, uh, that was, they, they were worried that we're going to go, come down and take, go down to the river because it was so big, so concentrated and so difficult to fight. So it, I'm not diminishing it as a, as a, as an issue and I.
Oh, no, no.
It's a, it's a huge issue, but at the same time, how do we deal with it as part of this?
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
But I, I think it's just trying to help people understand what that looks like and why some decisions are going to be made and that kind of thing. It's going to be, I think, more of a challenge.
We had a fire today that was so big they had to call on mutual aid. Just a brush fire turned into a, some sort of wildland fire by the, by the golf course on, on Cooper Point.
Early in the season too.
I'm not missing anybody anything, okay? Go on.
So, from your review of what you were able to see so far, what, any questions, say, on the, on the tree credit approach and, and how that would work? And, you know, starting with the understanding that our proposal is that, um, every property in the city would have a certain value assigned to it to begin with of what they should have. And then either they would, you know, determine their, what their actual value is based on what's on the site. If they're above, they could do certain things. If they're below, they would need to, you know, replace or re, you know, replant or do something else to bring themselves up. Is, is that concept understandable?
We're getting that in depth. But, you know, I'll ask a question.
Go ahead.
Do you have any idea what the average hourly cost of a qualified tree professional is?
That is an excellent question.
Um, you know, that seems to be the, at the heart of what we're looking at, you know, we're going to be doing a trade-off and that trade-off is going to be, um, that's going to be a significant portion of, of the, uh, cost of, uh, the trade-off. And I'm wondering, you know, uh, what's it going, what's it going to cost? Like, you, you, you must use these folks now in the city, so the city must know what they pay for them.
Well, more importantly, we have three professionals on the tree board covering various things and they can give me a really good idea on that. But that's an excellent question because, uh, there's a lot of triggers in there that said you need a qualified tree professional to do something. Um, and that's a valid, we need to have a better understanding of the potential cost of that.
And kind of on the, on the way to getting there, I'm wondering if there are, if there's a way to, um, for, for say, uh, an array of different types of actions that might be required that, um, the city could put together a schedule of roughly, here's the kind of thing you might have to do and here's roughly what it might cost. And, you know, or what you could do in the meanwhile on something like that. It looks like somebody's hands up, oh, Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, thank you. And kind of, uh, going off of what your question just was, um, can, can you remind me what type of timeframe someone would have to replant? Is there any like hard and fast? You have like six weeks to get it done, two weeks to get it done?
Um, I think, uh, that's actually a really good question. I know we have some timelines in there for how long a, a permit is active for. I don't know if we have an exact timeline for replanting because I think, um, there are better times during the year than others to plant. Um, and we might want to preserve some flexibility to make sure we're putting the trees in at the appropriate time of year. But let me follow up on that question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Wanted to quickly touch on the, the cost piece. So looks like the average cost for an arborist is between twenty and forty per hour based on indeed, that's local for the area here. Sure it's going to adjust. Would there be any way to maybe connect with any of the local colleges or universities that have those programs and maybe we could leverage them, kind of like when you go get a cheap haircut?
Mm-hmm.
At the local barber school? Not that I do that, but if you were to do that, maybe we could have them be part of that program where we team with them, they can provide that service, get college credit, bring the cost down and, uh, still meet the intent.
You could certainly look into that. My concern is I'm not sure if there's any local programs that do that. But, uh, and I think twenty to thirty an hour is very low. That's my concern. I would say start at a hundred and then figure it out. And it depends on what we're asking, they're being asked to do. Uh, there's the requirements for arborist reports which are much more involved. That would be on the higher end than somebody say coming by and, and doing a quick, you know, determination.
Yeah, it's going to be like a tree survey of the property too.
Mm-hmm.
Another thought that occurs to me on that kind of a thing is, you know, depending on the value of, um, you know, an individual's parcel, you know, that gets assigned through this, um, credit like system, um, two things really is, you know, kind of a more neighborhood approach and, you know, kind of balancing out, out within the, within a, an area, a neighborhood or a whatever might make sense ecologically or, you know, some, some group approach, so it's not all the burden of a single property owner. Um, and then, um, because these are, you know, widely, these, we're trying to promote community values, um, that the, that, um, the community has voiced and have gotten into plans and so on, um, it would be good if the city could partner and share some of the costs, um, where we, where we end up identifying that, you know, we need to replant or whatever we need to do. Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Based on the fact that, uh, a significant number of people that move into our neighborhood have no idea that there are covenants on the property or even that there was a homeowners' association, which I believe they're required by law to find out, uh, in the process of buying the house, uh, but, uh, the realtor doesn't bother to, uh, to tell them or whispers it or somehow they don't know about it. Um, you're talking here about putting trees on the property and then putting them in the, uh, Hurston County Auditor's, uh, database. Uh, is that going to be then like, uh, covenants? Is that going to be, uh, exposed to the buyer when they buy the house and, and how are you going to enforce that?
And I think we're, we're looking at that just for heritage tree, uh, trees that have been approved for a heritage tree nomination by the council. So it would be in fairly limited circumstances, but the concern there was, uh, if, say, a property owner had, uh, originally had worked with the city to list their tree as a heritage tree and they sell the property, how do you make sure that the person who's buying the property understands that, that they have a heritage tree and there are certain things, you know, if they need to do something, there's a process they need to follow. Um, so that was the intent really. It was like, whenever you sign a real estate deal, you get a three-inch stack, how, they don't print it out anymore, but it's a large stack of paper.
Digital stack.
And they, you know, the, the HOA stuff is buried in there. Um, whether you choose to read it or not is, is up to you. And if you choose to read contracts without reading them, I'd like to do business with you. But, um, it would, the, the hope would be that would be the formal mechanism for letting people know, uh, what they need to know about that tree.
Do you get the real estate community to support, uh, exposing that information?
Well, as.
As a real estate.
Real estate. Uh, among other things, I will, you do have to sign off on the HOA. So as the buyer, there is a requirement and part of the checklist that gets provided because title needs that paperwork to show that, does the buyer know that they have made HOA, do they adhere to it, does it make HOA review, period?
Signed everywhere there's an X.
But the red point, now that it's digital, you don't even have to read it. You just, I can click through a hundred and twenty pages in less than a minute. So most buyers choose not to read it, but they do have to disclose that. But to your point, if you have something in there that's required for them to be notified of, we may have to look at pushing that further up into the process, have it as a separate form or document with maybe a requirement of a wet signature. Hey, they need to understand it's because it is important, so it has to be differentiated in that process. There may be a way to force them to acknowledge it and not just.
I mean, I, I just, from my perspective, I can't understand why you would sign a bunch of paperwork without really knowing what you're doing. What, what's in the paperwork? I understand the excitement of going through a hundred plus pages.
Most people don't. And I've had to stop some people and be like, I've, there's no way I sent this to you and within four minutes, you sent it back signed. I was like, you need to take the time and review it. Like, we have till tomorrow, don't, don't rush it.
This is in terms and conditions on your Android phone.
Right.
Yeah, it's. But people just don't read, people don't read.
It's the, it's the pressures, the anxiety, it's, you're focused on, you got to move your kids, your school, I got to get this house closed, I got to get, if the HOA says I need three trees versus seven, they couldn't care less.
Yeah, so I think, Terry, from our perspective, there are cer- certain instances where we want to have that on, on title, uh, and that's with the heritage tree program. I don't think we want to do that above and beyond that for the very reason, you know, if we have enough trouble with getting HOA stuff read and understood, uh, I don't want to create another situation.
More realtor digs?
These, these are realtor digs as much as they were the people who were doing exactly what you described.
That's why I've.
Where closing takes forty minutes, you know?
That's why I've found happy employment elsewhere as well. Being in, in real estate all the time is.
So, do, any questions about significant versus landmark trees? I'd hate to ask you, does the class, could, could class, tell me the difference between a landmark tree and a significant tree?
Well, it is, we, we're going to have to spell it out. I guess I would say, you know, kind of, uh, kind of going back. Landmark trees literally used to be those ones that were at the corner of a property and marked the land. Or marked the, you know, a particular, uh, important feature on a, on a travel route or something like that, as opposed to something that's big or a treaty was signed under it or something else. Um, I, you know, I know we've probably moved beyond that kind of a definition, but, um...
Well, we're, we're not on the East Coast.
Yeah.
So we don't measure property from the large oak in the corner.
Yeah, that may have already been cut down or burned down or something like that. But there was a time when that did occur.
Exactly. No, um, just for clarification again, landmark trees are anything above a certain diameter in breast height. That's four and a half feet above, above the, um, ground. Thank you. And Terry's pointing out the helpful table in the definitions section, uh, where we typically it's twenty-four inches depending upon the species. Some species is a, you know, an older tree, uh, is not that big kind of thing. Uh, but there are special requirements for landmark trees in terms of, uh, what you can and can't do with them. And, uh, the one thing that we're working through right now on the staff level is when is it appropriate for a landowner to take a landmark tree down? And it's, you know, at one part of us, we want, we definitely want to have a higher level of protection for those kinds of trees because of, uh, all the values, you know, the, the larger trees have more habitat value, they have more carbon sequestration value, they have all these other things, above and beyond smaller sized trees. Uh, at the same time, we're trying to balance that with basically not telling the landowner unless the tree is dying or there's a, a, a particular exemption you, you have, that tree stays. We're trying to decide how exciting that conversation that will be every time we have to explain to somebody that they can't do anything. So we're trying to figure out how that might work. And are there any concerns, ideas, questions or anything that you think we should be considering as part of that process?
I just know the show tree on my property when I bought the house was a cascarata tree in the backyard and I see it on your list here. It died ten years ago and it's been replaced by a Japanese maple. And I think the Japanese maple will probably last longer than the cascarata tree. Hopefully it will. Uh, so, uh, even, even these trees die.
Right. Yeah, that, that is a, an understood, but at some point, you know, the trees will have to come down and be replaced.
I'll just note that on the, on the packet page twenty-eight, uh, I guess, uh, staff report page twenty-five, the, uh, title of the table is confusing where it says, um, this is sixteen point oh eight oh four oh dash one, landmark tree threshold heights. Seems like it should be landmark tree threshold sizes.
Yeah. Good point.
Uh, uh, packet page twenty-eight. Or wherever is the appropriate, you know, wherever it's next going to appear.
A little square at the bottom.
To, to label that, to label that chart, that, that nice table that, um, Commissioner Kirkpatrick pointed out, um, as sizes. I don't think we want a two-foot tr- thigh tree.
On page ninety.
I think we're talking about something different, yeah. Do you want to go on then?
Yeah, I, I, any questions or, or thoughts on the, the tree account section where we collect, funds are collected through fines? Where we collect, funds are collected through fines or replacement tree kind of things in terms of what can be collected and also what the monies can be used for. And this is on page 43 and 44, staff report, the square number.
Two numbers, so we, again, is it the right-hand number or the left-hand number?
The number that's in the far left-hand corner in the-
The middle shaded corner.
Box.
Yeah, shaded box.
What was the question again? Use of funds?
Yeah, in terms of what we establish the tree account for, meaning how the funds go into the tree account and also how the funds are ultimately spent over the tree account.
I like the fact that when you move from the existing version to the proposed version, you included the ability to use funds in the tree account to buy trees for people who, private, for private owners. I think that's one that we discussed when we were doing the lead-up to this. Is it, you know, the city already does it a couple of times a year anyway. But what, number seven? Funding of tree vegetation giveaway or incentive programs. That was not in the old coordinates and is in the new ones. I appreciated that being added.
I'm curious on number eight, the funding for future monitoring efforts. If that also includes reevaluation of either parcel or neighborhood or larger areas and, you know, how they're doing and whether they need to, you know, change their credit value. That's the right way to put it?
I think-
Is that included in the term monitoring?
Yeah, I think the intent here, this is fairly broad, and I think the intent is to capture things like that.
Okay.
They're not, you know, we need to number, make sure that what we're doing is doing what we intended it to do.
And then is there a clear path for when that occurs? That that new evaluation, new credit, up or down, is somehow ensconced on the-
I think we can, we can look to the urban forestry plan for that in terms of the timeline and schedule on when we do the reevaluation. For example, I mentioned Alyssa is out, and I think she got the award of the grant, but the grant is to do another tree survey, street tree survey to update what was done in 2018. So I would think that's a five-year cycle. So I think we're looking at a five-year cycle of evaluation for these kinds of things.
Looking at the equity issue of this, it seems to me within what's written right here, the city could look and see what parts of the city needed trees the most and could focus this incentive on those areas without running into any legal problems. Is that true?
I believe so.
Because that's, that's one of your motives, one of your objectives in doing this plan, and this fits right into that.
Yeah.
If you have an area which, over the years, the trees were not taken care of, the city could go in there now with a development plan using the tree fund to do that.
I think the important thing to keep in mind for that kind of thing, especially in areas that are maybe disadvantaged, is that it's one thing to replace the trees, you know, take out, replace, or just plant new trees. It's also to make sure there's some allowance for ongoing maintenance. So it may be a support from the city to help the neighborhood with that. So it's not just, we planted all these trees, have at it, and, you know, it's up to you to make sure they're well-maintained and everything. So I think we need to see, we need to see it, you know, broader than just, you know, putting it in. Major versus minor permits. Terry? Would you like to tell us the difference, or do you like to tell us the difference between a minor and a major permit?
Trying to, simplest thing as I saw it is, you know, the major permits are for developers and the minor permits are for land that's already been developed that has an individual owner living on it. It gets more complicated than that, but that was, to me, the big differentiation. And then there were exceptions where you required neither. That was even nicer.
That was, that's pretty close. Now, staff members such as Erica have politely pointed out that under that easy definition that if you do something to your property, add a building, expand, whatever, you trigger a major permit, what does that mean if you put a shed in? Or an ADU, which is something we're really encouraging people to do, versus, say, redevelop an entire parcel? And all the requirements that are triggered as part of a major permit, should that be the same or should there be a minor one and a major one and a really big major two? That's something that we're kind of thinking about.
It seems to me that in most cases, if you built an addition onto your house, you would be hiring a contractor to do that. And if you're hiring a decent contractor, they'll do the permit for you. So you'd be paying for the permit as part of the overall cost of building on the house. It would not be an imposition on the owner other than the cost of doing that because the permits in most cases are done by the contractor.
Well, I think the issue that we're thinking about is the requirements for what make up the permit, what needs to be submitted as part of that. For example, in, for major permits, we require an arborist report containing a certain amount of information, retention plan, a replacement plan, those kinds of things, which are, you know, it takes time for anybody to produce those and that, that cost is, it's not necessarily the cost of pulling a permit, it's the cost of putting together the permit application. That's what we're thinking about.
Well, again, when you, now that we're starting to receive these things online from the city where we got this 40 pages that a poor guy had to fill out, I think 90% of that's boilerplate. In other words, if you go to a contractor, the contractor's gonna have that in their computer and they're just gonna go like that. They're gonna, they're gonna fill up the page and it'll look impressive, it'll be 40 pages long, but it was all off of ready-made paragraphs off of their laptop. So I don't really consider that a major issue. It'll be a little bit more money that the contractor will have to charge to do the project. But that's how most of it's gonna get done.
Well, I think with tree removal, you're gonna have to hire a professional that can survey the trees, calculate how many trees, how many credits you have on your property. And so it's a little more complicated than a contractor doing those calculations or if they have the qualifications to do that.
Well, if you hire a general contractor, they sub everything out. The person that you're talking to would just become a sub to the general contractor. You've got one guy that does the roof, one guy that does sidewalk, and you've got one guy that has all that stuff on their computer and they pull it out. That would be like, I may be wrong, but... When I look at what you're sending me, the paperwork that has to be done on all these projects, and I got another one today, that, when I look at it, it looks like boilerplate. In other words, they know what the city wants to see and they put it in there and they're happy and the city's happy and everybody goes home now. They're content.
Well, you know, I... This is where I think things get, you know, people get frustrated at government. When government has a good idea and is well-intentioned and people want to comply, people want to do the right thing, generally speaking, but it becomes so cumbersome. This packet's 140 pages long. And, you know, there's significant trees and there's landmark trees, there's heritage trees, there's minor permits and major permits. How's a guy supposed to, how's a person supposed to navigate this? I mean, I don't, I couldn't tell you the difference between landmark, heritage, and significant sitting here. And I've read through this and, you know, more than once. And, you know, I think about myself in my backyard. If I wanted to put in a shed, I've got five dug firs that are large. Am I gonna have to pull a major permit if I want to take out two of those dug firs? You know, because they're, you know, they're this big. I can get, you know, J and L Tree Service to come over and cut them down for 2,500 bucks, but that doesn't involve doing a tree survey and measuring and, you know, what, what, how do you, how does a guy, how does, how does a family, oh, I want to put up a 200-square-foot shed, just throw my lawn mower, blah, 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 that's gonna be three grand from Home Depot and 2,500 for that, but then I gotta pull this permit, I gotta hire a tree professional, and, I don't know, it seems like you've all of a sudden gone really far into the weeds. And it just gets, there has to be a way to structure this so that you can lump all those, you know, like your heritage, your landmark, and your significant. You have to be able to lump those together. I mean, you have to figure out a way to put that stuff together and say, oh, do I have, so that somebody, you just look in their backyard and say, oh, yeah, I've got something that fits into that category. Is that a landmark tree? Is that a heritage tree? Is that a significant tree? I don't, how the hell do you get, how do you know? How's somebody gonna know? This is, I mean, it's, it's well-intentioned and I'm all for tree canopy. I'm a huge, you know, believer in it, but man, this just gets so granular. I don't know. It's a little overwhelming. And I can only imagine Joe Schmo trying to do the right thing, oh, I'll plant a couple of trees. I don't know. It's a lot. It's a lot. I think it's, I think it's, I don't think this is intended for the layman, like the person sitting in their backyard. Like you're saying, it's kind of a one-off. For those unique situations, you would look to the city for help. And that's where the city would have this as a reference to guide and assist before you spend the $3,000 to move and the $3,000 for the shed and other things. The intent should be for the city to help provide that because you may come across that experience once in your entire life where you're, and you may move somewhere else and never do, again, I'm, no one's gonna read this entirety unless they have to read it. You know, I don't think the city is saying, hey, you have homework, you need to read this about trees every time you go out to the park, right?
I think that's, I think that's exactly where it's going. I think that's exactly where it's headed.
Because if you don't, then you, then you, unfortunately, you're, you've messed that. I took those trees down, I built a shed, I had no idea.
My neighbor called to go and-
Yeah, my neighbor, yeah.
Next thing you know, and it's a big trouble. And, I mean, that's, you know, I don't know, it just, it just feels like that's kind of where we're at. I mean, it just seems like there has to be a way to simplify this a little bit. It just has to be.
So a couple, couple things. Number one, we flagged your name, so when you come-
Yeah, yeah.
-and we know to go out and check. Number two, the staff has really raised that as a huge question.
Well-
The complex, I mean, once I got it out of my computer and sent it out to everybody, was their polite way of expressing what you just said? Meaning, I need to understand it so I can manage it myself, this is really complex. And how do we make sure that the person who does it once or twice during their lifetime can manage it and know, understand what's there?
Yeah.
So your concern is very well noted. There's a couple ways I think we're gonna be trying to address that. Number one, we're going to have a user guide prepared for somebody to sort of walk them through what exactly they need to do. You know, here's, if you're gonna do this, follow this path. If you're gonna do this, follow this path. And then here are the things you need to really pay attention to.
That's an excellent idea.
So for that very reason, and it's like, okay, we do a code and then we have to explain what the code is. But that's what we have to do. Number two, definitely, we have politely, again, from people I work with, that simplify, shorten, simplify what we have now, because this probably is too complex. I was, when I joked about going from 22 pages and reducing it to 46, you know, that's... And I think there are good things in here. There are reasons why we have these things. However, is this the best way to do it? Is something that I think we're still trying to struggle with. So as we're going through this process together and we've got, you know, multiple meetings on this and everything else, I think we will definitely ask for your assistance in saying, is this really necessary? Is this, can we do this another way? And it's our job to take that to heart and make changes as we need to to get it into that format. So we, I definitely understand and hear your concerns there. And we still had your name on the-
I was gonna say, I wasn't already flagged. I mean, I should have figured that today.
Well, throughout here, there's the red print that says that a lot of this is still being looked at and don't be surprised if it's changed the next time around. I read into that that the system that exists today where a homeowner is allowed to take out X number of trees in X number of years will somewhere appear in the new language.
Yes.
Maybe I'm being optimistic, but that certainly is the greatest simplification of what your issue is. You're looking at your window and you've got two trees that you want to go. You just simply need to go into the city and get a permit. And that's a hand-across-the-counter proposition. And then you, once you've got that piece of paper in your hand, you know that those are the last two trees that you're gonna be able to cut down for the next X number of years. You know, you, you won't have to ask for a tree professional. You'll, you'll have the letter that says, you've taken your, your ante, it's gone.
Yeah, right.
Maybe that's not the case.
No, and actually, Terry, that is exactly the case. So on page 51 in the gray box is the table that we're sort of starting with. We had a proposal from the consultant that we thought was a little too aggressive in terms of how many trees you could take down over a certain number of years. And we're, we're working on that right now, a proposal I think that we're comfortable with that we'll bring back to you in July. So that's, that deals with anything that's not a landmark tree. I want to call your attention again to the landmark tree code, which is right now very aggressive in saying that you can't take down a tree unless it's unhealthy or you meet one of the exemptions. You don't have this table available for a dug fir that is more than 24 inches in diameter. So we're, we also have that in mind and we're trying to think of how that should work because we don't think that's a viable option. I mean, we want to preserve, we want to make it a little more difficult to take down a landmark tree, but we don't want to make it impossible.
It seems like an important thing, too, is for the property owner even know to approach the city. Period.
Yep. And that's sort of the upfront educational process that is outside of the actual regulations, but it's just something that we need to be doing.
It seems to me that's why we put a number-one priority on that in the, in the plan, was the education portion of it.
And we're meeting with Alyssa two days from now to talk about how that's coming. So that's still definitely out there. But I think, you know, in addition to, say, the user guide for using this particular code is the broader education about, you know, what the city is doing and what we're asking residents to do and property owners to do. That's above and beyond just, you know, read the code and understand what's in it.
Brad, you're probably gonna get to this, but it seems as well, I know we've heard in the past from at least one landowner about working forests and orchards and things that are not related to, I need to cut a tree down to build something. But just, I need to take care of my orchard or my wooded area or that's my livelihood. I do, I cut them down to sell them- I do, I cut them down to sell them to live, or whatever the, whatever the thing is. So, maybe it has to do with the particular title that we're in, Title sixteen, as opposed to whatever other thing for that kind of stuff. But if, can you talk about that, or will you be getting to that?
Yeah. And that, we're recalling those situations, things that require a forest management plan. So, as, as one of the, as you're correct, one of the landowners has a piece of property she wants to keep the trees but manage.
Yeah.
Variety reasons. So, the, the purpose of the forest management plan would be in those pretty isolated circumstances, but are still, you know, relevant to the community, uh, where if you've got an orchard, or if you're just managing over time, uh, you can do certain things, but, you know, you're subject to the, the plan. Out for that. So, the intent there, that the, the forest management plan would, would sort of cover you in terms of not having to pull a major permit every time you do something, it would just be covered by the plan. What your process would-
Plan your, yeah.
What we're, what we're trying to figure out internally, and this is not necessarily something that you have to concern too much about, is how do we fit that into our process? What kind of approval that looks like? We're still working through that, but I think the general concept, I think we, we, we think is a good one.
Any hands raised online?
Yeah. Um, I just want to emphasize, and I apologize for us canceling the, the June joint work session. We weren't ready, we weren't going to be ready. And we're having some issues, uh, well, I'm having personal issues. So, my availability is, is gonna be a little scattershot, um, dealing with some things. And I didn't wanna force the issue by, well, let's, let's meet anyway. Well, no, we've, we've got a lot of stuff to still work through. So, and we do have some time built into this process. Uh, it, we're looking at something going, you know, work sessions through September to make sure that everybody is comfortable with what we're doing, number one, uh, and that you're ready, you know, to offer a recommendation of the council on. But we have flexibility in how we subtract additional time to talk about stuff. So, I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that. But I think I've covered everything, the major things I wanted to cover today.
Let me ask you, let me ask both of you, was there, was there anything that the planning commission said this time or last time with the tree board that you didn't understand from us?
I, no, I don't-
All right.
Um, we, we appreciate you taking the time to, you know, sit through a forty-nine-page presentation of a two-hundred-page document. That was an introduction. But no, we, I don't think we had any questions based on what we heard, any comments. And again, if you have specific questions that you wanna ask outside of the meetings, you're more than welcome to do so. Um, we can collect those and respond to those, so everybody has the same information in terms of the questions and, and what answers we're providing and so forth.
Looking online, that, if that's getting close, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look around for some more comments.
And one final thing, we will be sending out an update to all the stakeholders about the meeting schedule changes and so forth. That'll probably go out either late this week or early next week.
I think we're in pretty good shape then. Thank you guys.
Wow.
I'm gonna cut you out.
Make sure that we adjourn.
All right. That was Commissioner Schumacher with a motion. Commissioner Varela with a second. Um, great, great discussion tonight. Um, all in favor of returning tonight, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, we're unanimous. All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Really, really good.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you.
Night, everybody.